Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Jake, roll call, please.
Keesha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for today's agenda.
Motion to approve this morning's agenda?
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Item number three is communications. Board? Jake?
Nothing.
Nothing either. Item number four is public comments. This is the portion of the agenda during which we hear any public comment about an item that is not on the agenda below. So if you are here on an agenda item, please wait till the items discussion portion of the agenda. Otherwise, any other public comments? Anything online? Seeing none? Entertain a motion for today's consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Onto business. Item number one is the bid opening for the Marion County Maintenance Facility Road Department, which is called Junction 92 Project. I will then now turn this over to FRK Architects. Tom? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board of Directors. Yes, appreciate this opportunity to be here today for the bid opening. It's a public bid opening and I think we have a number of contractors here. First of all, I'd like to just thank the contractors who spent time and effort in putting bids together. I know that's a large undertaking and on behalf of the county, appreciate your efforts on that. We will open six bids today in alphabetical order and we will open the bid security first by Iowa state law and then open up the bids, confirm that they appear to be in order and then read the numbers out loud. So with that, we'll start the bid opening process. First bid today is from Ball Teams. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond for 5% of the bid. Bid security appears to be in order. Bid form appears to be in order. Base bid for Ball Team is $5,843,000. Addendums one through three are acknowledged. The second bid today is from By State Contracting. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond for 5% of the bid. Bid security appears to be in order. I missed the fifth grade class and letter opening. Oh, thank you very much, sir. County order to the rescue. I want to go back, apologize to the first bid from the Ball Team. I forgot to mention the alternate bid number. The alternate number one is an add of $25,700. $25,700. By State's bid appeared to be in order. Base bid is $6,349,538. Addenda one through three are acknowledged. Alternate bid is an add of $24,750. Our third bid is from Briholz.
Who's that?
Briholz. They're out of Des Moines. That's B-R-E-I-H-O-L-Z. Bid bond for Briholz is in the form of a bond for 5% of the project. Bid form appears to be in order. Base bid for Briholz is 580... 580... Let me start that again. $5,830,000. The three addenda are acknowledged. Alternate bid is an add of $7,000. Our fourth bid is from Edge Commercial. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond for 5%. Bid bond appears to be in order. Bid form appears to be in order. Base bid for Edge Commercial is $5,964,000. The three addenda are acknowledged. And the alternate bid has a no bid indicated. Alternate bid indicates no bid. Our fourth bid is from Graphite. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond for 5% of the project. Bid security form appears to be in order. Bid form appears to be in order. Base bid for Graphite is $6,078,000. Addenda one through three are acknowledged. Alternate bid one is an add of $10,000. An add of $10,000. Our final bid is from Jensen. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond for 5% of the bid. It appears to be in order. Bid form is in order. Base bid for Jensen is $5,911,000. Addenda one through three are acknowledged. And the add alternate... The alternate is an add of $27,000. An add of $27,000. This ends the bid opening for the county maintenance project, the 92... Junction 92 Project. Again, thank you to all the bidders who participated today. The county will take the bids under advisement and I believe that the award is scheduled for two weeks from today.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
Combs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
I will then give some time of people if there are some that want to clear out.
I'm not going to stay for the prize.
Yeah, you know.
I... I'm telling you.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes.
Item number two is the bid opening for the proposed disposition of the Marion County property of 104 South Sixth Street. Do we have any bids? Okay. So, all right, we had one bid. This is a sealed bid. From Inside and Out Wellness Advocacy, which would be the Woodward Crisis Center and Transitional Living Program. Inside Out and Advocacy would like to submit a bid of $165,500 for the property located at 104 South Sixth Street.
How much was that again?
$165,500. We had a minimum bid amount of $165,000. Thank you for that. Board, any comments and questions regarding that? Otherwise, we can just...
I have none.
Okay.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to close discussion.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Thank you.
Keesha, you planning on...
Yep.
Let's consider this next meeting.
Yep, yep. So I was just going to state that in the next December... What is that, the 14th, I believe it is? 12th? 12th, okay. Yes. Then we will have a discussion item and...
Very good.
On that item. So appreciate that. Item number three is the City of Pella Lost Distribution Request. Mike.
I'd like to thank the board for having me here today and on behalf of the City of Pella, we're here to talk about renewal of our current local option redistribution agreement that we have both with Marion County and the City of Knoxville. Before going on with the presentation, on behalf of the city, we would like to thank you for our current agreement. We're extremely thankful for the agreement. And I would also like to commend the Board of Supervisors for this agreement. As far as I'm aware, Marion County is the only county in the state of Iowa that redistributes a portion of their local option taxes to the cities that generate the tax. On behalf of the City of Pella, once again, thank you. Now, before going on in the presentation, we have a brief update on a few other projects that we work together with Marion County and providing services to the citizens of both Marion County and the City of Pella. And let's go ahead. So the first project that we had was a joint project that we performed with Marion County and it's always good to talk about successful projects. And this would be the Prairie Ridge Residential Subdivision that we have. Now, to date, it is important to note that Supervisor Johnner and myself sit on the Housing Committee for the Development. We've approved 57 housing applications for the development. We have a capacity of right around 90 as far as single-family homes is concerned. And we've actually issued approximately 55 building permits as well. Now, it's very important to note, anytime you get into these developments, we always get asked the question, how are we doing in accordance with where we were, what we projected? When we originally did made our projections in 2019, which was pre-COVID on the matter, we had estimated that we'd be right at 34 homes that would be constructed by the end of 2023. And as you can see with the homes that are basically underway and being constructed now, we're well above that target on there as far as the homes are concerned. Now, it's also important to note, anytime we talk about housing subdivisions, and one of the key benefits that we had talked about in our agreement with Marion County was the low and moderate income funds that would be set aside with the residential housing subdivision. A lot of talk gets talked about housing prices and some of this is simply outside of the control of the local governments. We have real market forces such as the cost of housing materials on it that have driven up the cost of the homes in Prairie Ridge higher than what we had anticipated. But the cost of homes are up everywhere. One of the key benefits with this subdivision that we have in accordance with our development agreement with Marion County is Marion County is required to set aside 36% of the TIF revenues that it receives over the next 15 years for low and moderate income housing. Now, these funds could be used anywhere to support housing inside Marion County. So even though the subdivisions in Pella, the Board of Supervisors has exclusive control over the low and moderate income housing funds that are generated within the development and that could be used anywhere, once again, in Marion County. In fact, I believe with this current year where you have our first TIF award to Marion County, so you do have LMI funds in the bank right now. But what we're showing on our projections, and this is assuming that we can build out the development, which at this point, we think is a reasonable chance to do so on it. We believe over the next 15 years, the low and moderate income housing funds that will be generated by this development being at the tune of about $1.5 million and that'll be a tremendous benefit for Marion County and housing in Marion County. So if we could go ahead, please. Okay. And once again, we have a picture of this development's on the western side of Pella up there. But again, it's an extremely successful development on this. And in addition, the City of Pella took an initiative and we actually started a commercial development that was in close proximity to this. And the reason why I'm talking about the commercial development on this is in order to have the commercial development, we were required along with the residential development to make a significant investment in infrastructure for this project. The residential street that you see with Smash Park and Chick-fil-A was to the tune of about a million dollars that we were able to work with the developer on constructing that street. And in addition, for this development to occur, we had to make a significant investment in our water distribution system. The City of Pella actually authorized construction of a new 12-inch main that went to the western edge of our town and this main was needed to provide enhanced fire flows for the development. The tune that we had right around a million dollars in infrastructure costs on our water distribution system. And the reason why I'm mentioning this, just like any successful partnership, it's important to realize, especially with commercial development, that oftentimes, infrastructure is required. One of the areas that we do generate and are able to fund infrastructure on that's necessary to keep Marion County thriving, to keep local option taxes increasing in our community, is the local option revenues as well. So if we could go ahead, please. Now, I also want to briefly talk about some of the other areas that we've been able to work with Marion County in providing services for both the citizens of Pella and the citizens of rural Marion County. And that's in two aspects that we have here. We provide ambulance services not only for the citizens of Pella and dispatch services not only for the citizens of Pella. But that red area out there actually shows the dispatch area, service coverage area that we provide dispatch services for as well as ambulance services for. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is, just like with any partnerships, there are some areas that state law benefits the county. There are some areas that, you know, frankly, left unattended to in the state of Iowa and we try to fill voids on what we've had. And today, what we've tried to do is we've been successful, not only successful, but willing to provide services to rural Marion County for ambulance services as well. But when we look at the dispatch services, the cost of the subsidy on both the dispatch and the ambulance services for the city of Pella is to the tune of about $1.5 million. And what I'm simply mentioning this for is we try to work with Marion County in providing services for the citizens of Marion County as well and fit in where we can. But right now, those are two areas that we have tried to work with in providing public safety for the citizens of Marion County. So let's go ahead and talk a little local option if we could. A little bit of background on our agreement on it is actually the City of Pella's had a local option redistribution agreement since 2007. As we stated earlier, the current agreement expires on December 31st of this year. Now, the reason it's always important, anytime you get into any agreement, it's always important to understand why was the agreement approved in the first place? And one of the reasons in that third bullet point was to address concerns with the current state distribution formula. Now, currently, local option taxes are shared by all cities in Marion County along with rural Marion County on this. The distribution formula is based 75% on the population of the respective entities and 25% on valuations between the years 1984 to 1986. As I've stated to our council on this, I have no idea why 1984 to 1986 was chosen by the state legislature. My hunch is, is that's what it took to get the bill passed back in the mid 80s on it as well. But it's that valuation component between the years 1984 to 1986 that probably is the biggest culprit on skewing the results when you were to look at how the tax is actually generated versus where the receipts or the distribution of funds go to. Now, under the current agreement, it is important to note, as we stated, we share this agreement with both Marion County and the City of Knoxville. Currently, under the agreement, Marion County redistributes 88% of the current of countywide local option sales and services tax to the City of Pella and 4% to the City of Knoxville. Now, Supervisor Ramey can certainly chime in, but originally, when we had the current agreement, we negotiated this out. We worked in a small group and we worked quite extensively on this redistribution agreement. Back when this agreement was negotiated in 2011, what we really looked at and what the City of Pella's traditionally looked at is where the tax is generated. Right now, it's our understanding, when you look at the taxes on this, local option is very close matches the state sales tax reports. And so what we used back in 2011 to negotiate this agreement was the state sales tax reports on it and determining on the generation of the tax. And so back in 2011, the numbers that we had is we generated roughly about 55% of the tax, 54 to 55% of the tax. The redistribution amounts were based on a theory, or not a theory, but based on the premise that the tax is going to be collected in between Pella and Knoxville and Marion County and Marion County in general. Back in the day, roughly 90... About 94 to 95% of the tax was actually generated between the cities of Pella and Knoxville. And what the cities had asked for at the time was that a majority of the tax is generated. They'd like to receive a majority of the tax. Where we came up with our group is we targeted the number somewhere right around 65%. So if we could go to the next chart, please, on this. This is kind of a busy chart, but the first column where you saw it, see is if we looked at the local option receipts on there and then use the state sales tax reports on where it was generated, is we came up with the local option revenue that's generated. And then we also came up with the local option taxes that were generated under the state formula. And what you could see is based off the numbers that we had is where the 8% and the 4% came from is that percentage put both cities right at about 65%. So the thought was the tax is going to be collected in Pella and Knoxville. Both cities would receive a majority of the proceeds that they respectively generated back in 2011 and that was the methodology that we used for the current agreement. So if we could go ahead, please. Okay. Now, as far as our new agreement, what we're proposing for the City of Pella, and this is our proposal for the supervisors' consideration on this, is we believe the new agreement should align with this new local option sales and services tax that was approved by the citizens of Pella. Our new tax is actually a 20-year tax that will start on January 1st of next year and extends for 20 years. We also think that it's very important that the new agreement, as far as significant changes from the current agreement, that the new agreement contains a provision, in the event the state of Iowa changes the distribution formula or makes legislative changes on it, that the parties reserve the right to cancel the agreement and renegotiate the agreement if it's even necessary on there. On it, we've known in the past, the state legislature has been considering potential changes to the local option sales and services tax. And we believe that's a key agreement, a key clause when you look out that this agreement is being proposed to be renewed for 20 years. Now, as far as the redistribution percentage, it's very important to note that we have looked at it and we try to use the same methodology that we used back in 2011, which is based off the state sales tax and making estimations or projections on where the tax is actually generated. Now, based off what those numbers are, and I'll go over those very briefly this morning, what's being proposed is in years one and two, that we keep the status quo with the sales tax redistribution to the City of Pella. That would be at 8%. Years three and four, we increase it to 10%. In years five through 20 is actually to 12%. Now, I'm basically calculating some of the numbers that we've looked at is we looked about a 2% growth and where we came up with these percentages to get us up to the 12%. If you recall, we said that we'd like to have a majority of the revenue that we actually generate in Pella come back to Pella. 12% puts us up to about 63%. What we looked at, the financial constraints or what we believe would be potential financial constraints and projects that are already obligated by Marion County, is we looked at the transition up to 12% over the course of a four-year or five-year, four-year time period on that. We also believe that if sales tax continue to grow at the rate of 2% to 3% annually and if they grow faster than that, it's better for everybody that this redistribution agreement can be approved to the county with minimal financial consequences or detriment to the county. So let's go ahead, please. Good. Now, based on what we believe the state sales tax numbers, the latest data that we had on it is the City of Pella generates roughly 64% of the sales tax in Marion County on it. To receive at least 60% of that, we believe the City of Pella's percentage needs to be roughly about 12%. Now, let's go ahead, please, and go through the charts that we have here. Now, this first chart just simply shows what the sales tax generations, what the current estimates are in Marion County. And it has it both with the City of Pella and without the City of Pella that we have. And as you could see, roughly 64% of the tax, we believe, is generated in the City of Pella. Total receipts in Marion County on that far left corner, just over $5 million. Without the City of Pella, it's about $1.8 million. So we think it's wise for everybody to work together for the greater good of our communities and we think everybody has a vested interest in doing so. So if we could go ahead, please. Now, as far as our estimated receipts that we have here, well, this next chart simply shows is the current 12% distribution formula and then going up to 16%. Now, I would like to... I'd be remiss if I did not state, is we just had Knoxville at the 4%. We're not sure. We believe Knoxville, we're the county board and supervisor of Knoxville and we'll be open to working with both parties on it. But for example purposes, we just kept Knoxville's percentage at 4% on this as well for discussion purposes today. Now, based on this, with the 12% increase to the City of Pella, we believe that annually, that means about a $200,000 additional contribution from Marion County to the City of Pella. But once again, if we were to look at an increasing sales tax at roughly 2% to 3%, we believe most of this would be offset in years five by the time the 12% were taken. All right, let's go ahead, please. Now, what we have here on this last page just simply shows, once again, where the local option revenue based off the state sales tax reports is generated versus what's received at the 16%. And the key one for the City of Pella is with the 12%. And the key one for the city of Pella is with the 12% redistribution that we would have is we'd be just at 63%. And when we've talked about this with our city council on the matter. Again, the direction that staff had is they felt that if the tax is going to be collected and generated, collected in Pella, that the majority, they'd like to have a majority of the proceeds come back to the city of Pella. Without a redistribution agreement, we would actually be somewhere in the 40% according to the state distribution formula on this as well. So again, from our standpoint, renewal of the agreement is a high priority for the city of Pella. So let's go ahead, please. Okay. Now, before we conclude our presentation and open it up to questions, I'd also like to recognize a few audience members that we have in attendance today that are also here on behalf of the city of Pella. We have Mayor Don DeWard. We also have council member Dr. Spencer Carlstone, and I believe council member elect John Butler is in attendance. And if I missed anyone, I apologize on that as well. But once again, we're very grateful for our current redistribution agreement. I would also like to stress that we're interested in working both Marion County supervisors and the city of Knoxville on renewing the current agreement. We believe it's important for Marion County, and we also believe it's very important that we work together to serve our citizens. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on the city of Pella's proposal.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. Just one quick clarification. I want to make sure I understood you correctly. And regarding where you got your figures from, did you say you got that from the state sales tax?
Yes.
That's okay. All right. I wasn't for sure. I was trying to look for those and I couldn't find them, so I wanted clarity on that. Wanting to know, making sure that, you know, all the audience and everybody understands. Jake or Michaela, can somebody explain how the distribution works? Make sure that we're all understanding it. Do you mind if, is there?
Yeah, I can answer any question on how my office administers that.
Yeah, just so, so that we all understand. So my understanding, does the current loss that the cities received, does a check go to them or does the state send that to them? Is that how that works? Or how does it work? Can you just tell us the process?
I can. So the end of every month, all of the lost money that is collected by any of our different agencies, that's all sent to the state. And then the state, at the end of every month, gives each, in our case, so Knoxville, Marion County, Pella, Swan gets a little bit, Hannamleton gets some, Pleasantville. All of those agencies get their cut, their split, which is that formula that Mike referred to that was set based on population and assessments that 1984 to 1986 range. So of Marion County's cut that we get, so let's say $500,000 is the, what is distributed throughout the entire county. To just use really round numbers, let's say Marion County gets 200,000 and Pella gets 150,000. So we then, in my office, we cut a check to the city of Pella for 8%, not of our, say, $200,000 amount. We cut a check for 8% of countywide collections. So that $500,000 full amount that's been redistributed to all of Marion County. And then we cut a check to Knoxville for 4% of countywide collections.
And then that percentage obviously comes off of what we receive at the county level.
Correct, yes.
Okay, yeah. So it reduces ours. Okay. Thank you for that clarity. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood how that was done. So I will open up to the board and let them ask questions and from there, I'm sure I'll have some more, but. Any questions, Ford?
So the, so the money, the money that Pella and Knoxville, all these other entities receive is the counties. That's what we're giving part of our, our money to them, correct? Of our local option sales tax.
Correct, yes.
I'm just simplifying.
Yes, if I understand your question correctly. Yes.
So, and that agreement we was in was, is unique to the state of Iowa, am I correct in assuming that? That most county, most other counties do not give a portion of their money to cities.
Supervisor McCombs, I will state, at least, I'm not aware of any other redistribution agreement in the state of Iowa. Doesn't mean they don't exist. I'm simply not aware.
Yeah, I'm not aware of them either.
Mike, do you have any questions?
So Mike, you know, I want, I want a chance to kind of read through the numbers and think about the proposal, but not to oversimplify, but you're building in an inflation rider for Pella's share of sales tax reimbursement. Because you're anticipating growth in sales tax. So you're trying to keep the county collection part of it somewhat neutral because you're expecting growth in sales tax revenues over time. Is that, I, I mean, I want to make sure, because right now, sales tax is heavily dependent and impacted by inflation. Right? And we've been running at pretty high numbers. If that begins to decrease, you've got some volatility in that number. Does that concern Pella at all?
Supervisor Amy, I think it's always a concern anytime you look at projections. And just to explain where we came about it and coming up with our percentages, we use the current projected receipts for Marion County for local option. We looked at what redistribution percentage would need to be, take place for Pella to receive at least over 60% of the current tax that we generate based off sales tax reports. That's how we came up with our number. And looking at the incremental proposed phased-in scales, what I simply looked at was a growth factor of 2 to 3% per year. Somewhere right around in that area and looking at Marion County because we had just in the conversations that we've had off and on with various representatives of the county, we realized that you have a five-year CIP, that you have projects obligated. And what we want to do is we want to work as a team on this and promote Marion County. And we had thought a phased-in approach would be the best approach over a five-year period is what we're proposing with it. And based off the numbers and our calculations, we believe if it goes up 2 to 3% and looking at the additional increment that would be paid to the city of Pella, we can relocate and we're shooting forward to try to make it revenue off, revenue neutral to Marion County. And that's what we, that's how we came up with the numbers.
It's a gross dollar estimate.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I like the fact that you're locking in the first two years. We have project commitments. We just went through one where we opened a bid.
Yes.
Where we have allocated lost money for Junction 92 in support of that and some other projects. So yeah, I'll need some time to think through the numbers, Mike, to see what, what other questions I might have on that. The, it's the growth piece that I'm concerned about.
Yes.
Because the assumption that we'll continue to grow at that 2 to 3% rate in terms of our total sales tax collections is assuming economic activity that's fairly consistent with what we're seeing now. If we look out about 10 years in terms of general economic indicators, that's not what they're showing. I mean, so.
Yeah, I'm a.
But what's that, Steve?
I'm not a big fan of a 20-year commitment.
Well, well, we got a couple of pro, so Mike, how do we deal, Steve, I was going to ask that, but that's a great point. How do we deal with the fact that boards now because of the Supreme Court ruling, and Jared, you can correct me if I'm wrong, entering into long-term agreements like that, a future board could say, we don't like that. We want to change that. Wouldn't it be better to have a shorter term on the agreement and come back and revisit these things on a more frequent basis?
That's where I'm at.
I mean, Steve, I agree. I, I mean, doesn't that make a little more sense to see where the economy is going? Where collections are, where expenses are relative to both county and city? I just, just a thought. I don't know if you guys talked about that.
Yeah, no, we have on it. Here's, keep in mind, the numbers are based on overriding principle. Majority of the taxes that are generated by the city of Pella, the city council would like to receive.
Yes.
That's how we came up with 12%. We also feel, we also feel, and excuse me Supervisor McCombs, I'll get your question. But we also feel that when we look at the agreement on here, that back in 2011 Supervisor Amy, you remember, we had numerous small group meetings where we looked at the numbers, we looked at the countywide collections. And we worked with the city of Knoxville, so it wasn't just Pella, Marion County, it was Pella, Knoxville, the small group proposal. You have to start somewhere on an agreement. Now, from my standpoint and looking at the 20AD agreements and recent Supreme Court decisions, the agreement is only as good as the parties that are involved. And that's the reality we're all living with. But I think there's also a couple of things we also need to keep in mind. Is the parties can make, either the city of Knoxville or the city of Pella can make decisions and turn it back to a referendum not to have the tax again in Marion County. So again, I think we need to be negotiating out an agreement. We're hoping to work with both Knoxville and Marion County on this issue for the betterment of our citizens. And I think it's been, that, I think we all have a vested interest in doing so.
So Mike, and I, I agree that when we did this back in 11 and 12, it was a total collaborative effort.
Yes.
Across all of our parties. And I do agree that you should not, the city of Pella, I would say this is the same as the city of Knoxville, should not see your percentage degrade over time relative to what the county collects. At the same time, there are benefits to Marion County receiving a constant revenue source from sales tax. And that's really how the, the tax got passed in the first place was countywide referendum. We had some very specific ballot language that was a part of that in terms of debt reduction and how that tax would be deployed. So I think there are some, some countywide benefits that apply as well. So I got, I got to think through the numbers, Mike, but it, this part of my question is.
Okay, okay. I probably didn't answer.
No, no, you really didn't. With all due respect, it's, why would we want to do 20-year agreements? About a real basic level, Mike. Why would we want to do a long-term agreement?
Yeah, where I was going, and I apologize for not answering your question. This was an initial proposal from the city of Pella. We feel it's important if the tax is going to be collected in the city of Pella, we should have a redistribution agreement over the life of our local option agreement. Now, obviously, the term of the agreement is something the parties could negotiate out. And there may be other factors that we need to consider on that. We'd be willing to discuss those. We'd be also willing to discuss other provisions that cause, hey, a review of the agreement, what conditions may trigger that. We've already listed one of them that we would be willing to do if there's a distribution change by the state legislature that would give the parties a, a chance to review the agreement, if not canceled the agreement. So we would be willing to work with both Marion County and Knoxville on issues such as terms, the condition for renewal. On that, we feel that's all part of the negotiation process. And what I was simply alluding to is if you look back in 2011 and 10, we spent a lot of time working together on this. Right now, what we have is initial proposals from the city of Pella on this. We're willing to do that once again and look at those agreements. So not that they're not to diminish your points or valid points, they need to be considered, but we also feel that that's something that we could further discuss.
No, I appreciate that, Mike. And I, I do believe that we'll, we can work in total partnership in discussing these issues. Would there be an openness from Pella as well to leverage the county lobbyists to talk to the legislature about the formulation? I mean, the fact that it's still based on 1984 through 86 is silly, right?
I wondered, I wondered if this isn't, you know, legislators wise, I mean, have you been speaking with them about the formula? Because I do think, I wonder, when they pass this, did they do this because counties are somewhat third in line? Meaning like when property tax, you know, schools, the cities, and then the counties, was this a benefit to help the counties? And so maybe that is going back to, you know, legislation wise.
I can kind of answer that question. Sorry, Mike, I'll, I'll jump in on this one. Just in having some discussions already, some of the thought process in the legislature, whenever we talk about sales tax is equity. So to a certain degree, there's always been that idea within the legislation that all parties would somehow get a beneficial impact from the tax. Thing, thing to remember about sales tax, it's a regressive tax, okay? And regressive taxation, I'm not a fan of it. So Mike, when you say if the residents of Marion County said, we want to do away with it, I'd go, yeah, good, good job. Because it, it hits poorer and lower income folks harder than it does for higher income. And I don't, I just don't like that kind of tax policy in principle. So that's why the state, Keisha, has been leaning that way. And you'll hear it even more and more when you meet with legislators, they'll talk more in terms of equity distribution. Not in the way we use equity in a bad way now, but just in terms of fairness. Mike, you probably have heard the same things at the city level. So, so that is a part of it, Keisha. You're exactly right.
There's no doubt, you know, that, you know, the city of Pella generates an enormous amount of the local option sales tax. But wouldn't it be fair to say that those dollars that are generated are generated by other citizens other than citizens of Pella? I mean, other people coming into town and spending their money. So I have to be careful about how, how the other citizens of the county look at this. And how it's going to affect the bottom line for them, especially in, in infrastructure. We're looking at increasing costs and trying to maintain our roads the way it is. And we depend heavily on that local option sales tax, on our, our share of that. And I mean, to be quite frankly, you know, if, if we don't have a, if we don't have a viable road system to get to Pella, to get to Knoxville, everything else is a moot point. They're not going to, they're not going to have any roads to get there to spend their money.
Supervisor McCombs, I respect your opinion on it, and we face much the same dilemma. If you recall, when we talked about the local option sales and services tax on the generation, that requires infrastructure. So when we talk about infrastructure, maintaining that infrastructure necessary to support commercial businesses to allow them to expand and grow, local option revenues is one of the ways that we do that in, in the city of Pella as well. So we respect that opinion. And once again, what I would state is you have to start somewhere. This is a proposal from the city of Pella. I think I'm safely stating, and Mayor DeWard, Dr. Carlstone, I think otherwise, please speak. We're willing to work with Marion County and the city of Knoxville on renegotiating out the agreement.
Right now, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of nothing more than a five-year plan for either city, city and Knoxville or Pella. I mean, I, I understand that you can't do it year by year because then the cities can't plan it. But also I think I don't want to encumber any future boards. And, and again, go back to what you're talking about, the sales tax. I, I, I think five years is max I would ever go on an agreement and then revisit it every five years. I mean, if things, things going good, fine, then we re-up it.
And I, and. Plan wise, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And so Mike, I, I appreciate that. And I, like I said, from me, anyway, I would need to look at the numbers. Questions, discussion around the proposal. I'm, I'm in, I'm with Steve. It's kind of why I raised the point. A long-term 20-year agreement, I, I just, that I can tell you right now, I can't support. Economic conditions are such, we have to be more flexible. And I think we have to consider what's going to happen over the next several years on the macro, just the US economy in total. But I would look at something in that five-year range as being very reasonable that would not impinge upon future boards too much where they would have to make massive adjustments. So, so yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look over the numbers and if I have questions, I, I know who to call.
Tyler, can you speak to our future needs?
Yeah, I was going to ask if I could make a couple of comments. I, I guess I feel an obligation to make some comments here as the largest user of the county's local option sales tax. You know, I've been getting a lot of questions from the public, from other department heads at the county about, about local option sales tax. And just for, Mark alluded to this, and I think maybe Steve. So that $2 million number that were, was in the slides that comes into the county, per the ballot language, 50% of that is obligated to tax relief, which is the general and the general supplemental, which that benefits all residents of Marion County, including citizens of all incorporated towns. In addition to that, the board, previous boards have, had authorized what is remaining of that million, 300,000 of that to go to a debt payment for the law enforcement center, also benefiting all citizens of Marion County to have this law enforcement center in jail that we have. So the remaining there has over the last year, I'm going to speak on the last 10 years because I've been county engineer for 10 years. So the remaining has been roughly 200, 250,000 for the majority of that. Up until recent years, as local option sales taxes have started to increase. So as the road department, we have, we are not getting an allocation. Departments do throughout the state get an allocation for projects per their ballot language. We do not get that as a supplement. We, I come to you and make a request on a project-by-project basis to utilize those funds. And it has been and is in, under the new ballot language, an allowable use of local option sales tax suspended on road department facilities, equipment, and road projects. And over the last 10 years, we have spent that roughly 2.5 million on road projects. And two of our largest road projects that are transportation-related road. And two of our largest road projects that are transportation-related road projects, uh, that we spent local option sales tax money on was a direct, uh, connection to Pella. Old Highway one sixty-three overlay was a fifty-fifty, a joint project with the city of Pella, as well as the Volkswagen Trail Rehabilitation. In addition to that, we've spent, there are roads throughout the county that are considered local roads. They are not eligible for anything other than property tax dollar funding or sales tax funding locally funded. They are not eligible for state funds. They're not eligible for federal aid. And we have many of those roads that have been neglected for years. And local option sales tax was a way that we were able to start doing some rehabilitation on a lot of those. And largely, there, there's a large amount of seal code, or excuse me, subdivisions adjacent to our cities. Knoxville Estates, Dutchman's Landing, Court Mirror, uh, Hunter's Ridge, Eagle Creek, for example. We were able to start doing some work in those subdivisions that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do drainage improvements and pavement rehabilitation and, and maintenance projects. So, and, you know, we are extremely grateful that we have had that. Uh, not all county road departments get that. Some get an allocation and they can depend on that funding from local option sales tax. But moving forward. You just heard the bids come in for our facilities. And every week I'm banging my head against the wall and struggling with that exact same thing that just happened. Every week we turn around and this costs more and that costs more and rock just went up another eight and a half percent. And which affects concrete prices and asphalt prices and everything else that we do as, as a road department. So we have just regressed about eight, ten years by my estimations for what we get out of our dollar that we spend at the road department because of inflation. That's not, no one's fault here. So we are struggling and we will be coming to you more and more in the future for that local option sales tax money for the road department projects. Which are all, benefit all users of Marion County. Uh, and. You know, the recent project Junction ninety-two, perfect example, you know, we, we explored options for bonding for that project. And thankfully, you know, I can stand here and say, we came up with a plan where we did not have to bond for a major facilities project. Because we had, we had some alternative funding with ARPA, but local option sales tax was a huge component of us not bonding for a facility project. That will benefit generations of Marion County residents for sixty, eighty years. We hope that facility stands and benefits all of Marion County and, and sets us up for the future. And Marion County has been extremely fortunate, the road department, that we haven't had to buy facilities in the past. We lease a facility that was donated from the VA to conservation and we, conservation lets us lease that property that we're currently in. We've been extremely fortunate. So hopefully this is a one-time generational expense for our department for which we are extremely grateful. But facilities is not really what I'm here to argue about or speak on. It's really about the road system because that's really where we want our dollars to go. When we got the additional fuel tax money, it went to the roads immediately. We've, you guys have seen my budgets. We've cut expenditures on the administrative and the engineering side year after year. And everything that we try to do as a road department, including utilizing local option sales tax, is to better the road system and support our local roads that we can't otherwise fund.
Appreciate it, Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Hey, yeah, one, you can I, can I just Mike, one more question, Don? I just want to make sure I have this number in my head. Mike, with, for the city of Pella, what is your target percentage distribution? Even if you looked out on a five-year window, are you looking at a sixty-four percent split on total sales tax? Is that kind of your number that the council has landed upon?
Well, as far as, just so I understand your, your, your question, Supervisor Ramey, as far as the distribution percent, what needs to come back to Pella as far as the generation?
Yes.
What we've, we've operated under a premise that if we're going to collect the tax in Pella, we'd like to have a majority of the tax that is generated in Pella come back to the city of Pella. Traditionally, where we've landed on this in the states back to two thousand and seven through the two thousand and ten, eleven negotiations. That number has been between sixty and sixty-five percent is what we'd like to have back. And that's what we're operating under in making this proposal today.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Mike.
I do have one question, Mike, and then Don, I, I, I heard you want to speak. Can we go back to slide seventeen by chance? Just want to make sure that maybe the public understands. So Mike, when you talk about, you know, the service, um, public safety partnership and regarding that. Do you know, um, the history? Could you tell maybe a little bit about the history and regarding the service? And because as long as I have been around, um, and you know, sadly, I've been around a few years. Has, has Pella had their own dispatch? Is that correct?
I could say for the state, since I've been in Pella, we've operated our own dispatch center. And it largely resembles the, the coverage areas that we have up there, not only for, um, other, not only for ambulance. But also our fire department operates in the same coverage area. So we've operated our own dispatch center on this and the communication system on that as well. It's supported both the fire and ambulance services throughout.
And you guys have in the past, then, uh, because, um, you have a dispatch center, that's something that you want to have. Because it's, I'm not for sure, Sheriff, how many, how many is there in the state that currently, is there a multiple situation? And where dispatches, there's multiple dispatches in the county? Because it's, it is, I think in the past, Mike, has it been something that you guys have just taken on that cost? And paid for it because your citizens wanted it or?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll try. And this is a very good, uh, question, Supervisor John. And what I was simply referring to is when you look at working together. We did not provide the dispatch services currently that we do. Marion County would have to. There would also be a radio communication issue in Pella and outside of Pella as far as coverage requirements that would need to be addressed. What we were simply stating is both on the ambulance side of things, along with the rural fire departments as well as the dispatch services. We're working with the county for the betterment of our citizens on it as well. And you could see Pella being on the northwest, northeast corner of Marion County. We also, Mahaski County, the same way we tell if we are talking to the Mahaski County supervisors. We provide services outside the city of Pella for both the benefit of Marion County and Mahaski County. That's all we are simply stating is that we're working together. These are long-term issues that would likely need to be addressed in the future. But in the meantime, the services need to be provided, dispatch for this area needs to be provided. There needs to be sufficient radio communication and technology in the rural areas. And that's something we're currently doing. And that's all we are stating is that we are providing services out there and trying to do our part to serve the citizens of both Marion and Mahaski County.
But isn't, isn't there a current, current process underway about the essential services? It hasn't been answered yet as far as. Packs being generated for that. So that would kind of eliminate your need for that if there's, if that passes, essential services.
Yeah, I'll, again, Supervisor McCombs, I think a lot of it comes about the exact proposal that comes in front of the county board of supervisors. When we talk about the essential services tax in Pella, it's very important to realize where people pay their property taxes and what services they're going to support. I think it's very key as we consider an essential services tax, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, that we look at that distribution formula and on, on it as well. And that's, I'll just leave it at that because I know.
That won't have anything to do with the loss distribution.
What's that?
That won't have anything to do with the loss distribution.
No, no, but that's something that will need to be considered again if an essential services tax is passed in Marion County. That'll be something that could be a benefit to, I, I believe, the city of Pella, and I'm assuming the city of Knoxville, because they also provide ambulance services outside their city limits.
Right, that, that group has been making, uh, slow but steady progress.
Yes.
Very slow.
Yeah.
And very steady progress. But there's still, is not a general agreement on formulation yet.
That.
And that's one of the biggest holdups right now is how will the, how will those dollars be distributed? So we're still, the group is still working that out.
So Pella, obviously, you know, I do, they have had their dispatch. It's been there many years. Um, and you guys have been paying for it. But that is something that, uh, you know, whether it's just the Pella citizens that want that, which is more important. I think we spoke about this before a little bit when I had a meeting with you and that the citizens wanted that. But, um, that is a unique situation. I, I think that the numbers are, there's not a ton of, uh, counties that have multiple dispatches, is my understanding. And Sheriff, do you have that?
To, to answer your question, the trend is the consolidation. Like just last June, Perry PD had their own dispatch. They consolidated with Dallas County. Iowa Falls had their own dispatch. They consolidated with Hardin County. Within the last couple of years, the city of O'Line consolidated with Fayette County. So the trend is a savings. I mean, that's why I think right now the only two that are comparable in size is Clear Lake in Saragordo County. Clear Lake still has their own, and then Pella and us. But the rest of them, I mean, um, are larger, like the Polk counties have Westcom, Polk County and Des Moines PD. But no smaller counties, I think. And they're seeing that, that consolidation and that savings of money in regards to doing that is why they're doing it. But we've had discussions. I mean, it's, it's continuing discussions in regards to that and difference on whether they want to keep it. I mean, for the citizens of Pella or whether they want to combine or something, those are just ongoing, ongoing discussions on.
I want to say this, you know, if, if the citizens of Pella want that and they want to pay for that, I understand, you know, so that is, that's a choice that the city is making, but yeah, so.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for answering that question. So. Don, Don, I believe you had a comment.
Uh, thanks for the time. Um, I, I, just to clarify a little bit, I don't think Mike was making any other point than, that just giving examples of how the county and the city of, how we partnered on some things. I don't think this was a complaint about how it's paid for and that. I think it was just a, a point that, that we have worked together in different areas. And we had desired to continue to work together. So I don't want to make more of that than, uh, and I know there's discussions about the essential services tax or discussions about dispatch. All of that's going on. And hopefully we can work together on those projects to, to help us all. So when we talk about the loss tax, uh, it's a typical revenue source that everybody wants some of it, right?
Right.
It's a great revenue source for Marion County. I just heard an impassioned plea from the, uh, county, uh, road department of why they need what they need. No problem. I get that. I think the thing, the couple of points that I want to add to the discussion. Uh, there's a lot of questions have been asked that I would like to answer, but I'm not going to take the time now. The two things, the twenty-year agreement, I think simply from our discussions, that's the length of the tax. We said, let's have a twenty-year agreement. So that's very negotiable how we would structure that agreement. And I think having the caveat in there that if the legislature changes anything, which they're probably likely to do. Without really considering the consequences to all of us, uh, we obviously, either party has a right to renegotiate. But one point I want to make, um, I think in my mind, and I, I, I don't want to disparage anyone else by how I say this, so please don't take it that way. But I think we're thinking about it in terms of fairness. I wasn't around in two thousand and eleven when the agreement was first, uh, conceived and approved. But I think what you have in Marion County is, as Mike's chart showed, we have two sales tax generating municipalities that generate, what, ninety-four percent of the sales tax? And to Steve's point, I agree a hundred percent. You know, right around Pella, we have several development areas that aren't in the city limits. And those people shop in Pella. And so yes, they're spending their money in Pella and we're, we're collecting that sales tax. But I think if you look at the numbers back to two thousand and eleven, at that point in time, I think, and Mike can verify this. Pella was generating forty-eight percent of the sales tax in, in Marion County. Knoxville was generating forty. Was that the numbers or?
I think we are, uh, Mayor, I believe we were actually at the, I think, fifties.
Okay, so Pella was fifty-something, Knoxville was forty-something. Fast forward to two thousand and twenty-three, Pella is now generating sixty-four percent. Knoxville is generating twenty-eight, right?
But they're generating, but they're, but they're also the people that don't live there are.
I, I agree. I, I agree. But the point I want to make is this. It's not just inflation. Mark pointed out inflation has a lot to do with it. But why is it skewed so far that way for Pella? It's because of the investments that our business community and the city of Pella have made over these years. To create a municipality that attracts people and thereby raises our sales tax. I think if we probably could drill into the numbers. A big percentage, maybe not quite fifty percent, but almost fifty percent of the sales tax generated in Pella comes from somewhere else, not Pella residents. Because of the tremendous tourism industry that we have, the number of people that visit our community on a daily basis and spend their money there. And so I don't want you to forget how one of the reasons this percentage has changed and where Pella has become this huge generator of sales taxes. Because of investment made by the city of Pella, made by the businesses in our community to generate that kind of money. So we're just looking at it from a fairness standpoint and trying to keep it basically the way it is based on those facts. So that's what I would ask you to do. And Mark has said he's going to look at the numbers. But look at those numbers and say, uh, based on generation of sales tax. Let's try to keep it as fair as we can to all of Marion County. Uh.
I do look at, I do look at the numbers and I also understand that, that the county as a whole in the near future is going to be seeing a shortfall. Just, just like, uh, Tyler was talking about. I, it's, it's a struggle for me.
Well, what's the, oh, 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 I want to make sure we, we, we know that the road department will struggle with revenue. That doesn't necessarily mean the county will have a shortfall. I, I want to be clear about that. Um, we're going to generate more interest income this year than we've ever generated in the, in the years I've been on the board. And that's because of the work Michaela has done. So we do have some advantages, if there are advantages in an economy like this, that we are, we are putting out there financially to help support Marion County efforts. Um, Don, I, I think, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And I, that's why I asked Mike about the split. If you're trying to maintain, uh, what I would say is an equitable share of sales tax revenue over a period of time, factoring in growth. The county really doesn't get impacted negatively by that because of the distributions stay relatively the same. We might be plus one hundred thousand, minus two hundred thousand. Again, I'll have to go through the, the scale. But it sounds like it's a fair leveled approach based on, and, and that's the part I have to get to, Mike, with is what's the growth number? And where does that come from? Because that's what could skew it. If our growth estimates are off, that's where the model falls apart. So we just have to talk about that. What does that mean? And where does that come from? Inflation has been a big driver. Part of sales tax is valuation. And the splits in valuation, valuation's been a driver. So all these things have to be kind of put together. Um, we have the proximity of a federal property called Lake Red Rock. It's paid for by all the taxpayers. That's a big driver. So all those things have to be factored in as we look at fairness and, and the equities here. But I, I understand what you're trying to do. Um, but we just need to talk about those, those assumptions.
Mike, I appreciate you presenting. I, I will just close with this. Um, I know that I have met with Mike and Don in the past. And I, I too was very much saying, um, probably shorter term. I do think that if, you know, a five-year term. But I feel that our needs need to be focused. This is me speaking personally on Marion County and departments and the, and the staff. Um, we've helped the bigger cities and, um, I feel that what we're doing is, is more than reasonable. Ninety-eight other counties aren't doing this. And so, um, that's my viewpoint. I do know that we're getting down to the wire, both Heather, Mike, um, you know, so December twelfth, I mean, you know, it's. We need to probably have a proposal. And I do ask, and I think the board had spoke previously, that you work together if you can. Please communicate and, uh, do this, you know, possibly a proposal, um, on December twelfth. And then, you know, hopefully we can work this out. But I am too, um, at that, I'm at five years and keeping it as is. So, okay.
Okay, Supervisor John, just could I ask one question? We'd be happy to work with the city of Knoxville. Would Marion County like to be a part of those conversations?
Absolutely.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Um, if you could let me know Supervisor or the representative of Marion County, we'd be happy to work with both of you. And finally, I would just like to close once again on behalf of the city of Pella. Thank you, um, for our current agreement and thank you for working with us on renewing the current agreement.
I appreciate it, Mike. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to close discussion.
移到
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Give a few minutes here if anybody wants to.
And nobody wants to stay in the class.
I know, right? Onto item number four, resolution twenty twenty-three ninety-one. This is the general obligation, uh, capital loan notes. The Jake or Michael or anybody? Just the formality?
This is just, this is
Just approving.
Process going through forward for the final bond sale, uh, coming up next month.
But it's in conformity with everything we've approved, Jake, the dollar amounts have not changed.
Allerson Cooney, who's representing Marion County, um, and DA Davidson, who's representing Marion County have been working through their bond sale process, um, creating all of these documents and, uh, the, uh, steps prior to that final sale day, so.
Yep.
Uh, as far as I know, it's just normal standard, standard operating procedure at what you guys have all discussed and approved, uh, over the last year plus.
Yeah, so unless there's a discussion, Keesha, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Item number five is resolution twenty twenty-three ninety-two, approving and authorizing the loan agreement and authorizing providing the issuance of two-point-one obligation capital notes.
So again, step two of, um, the formal processes as required by all the, um, rules and regulations of, of these processes on allowing the county to do, um, and the, and the financial institutions to do what they need to do for what you guys have been approving this whole time. For Atkins, this is the Atkins, um, development project in Pleasantville.
No, appreciate that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ninety-two.
Second. McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Item number six is the Class E retail alcohol license renewal. Um, this is New Star Newton.
Um, generally this runs through my office and we receive notification from the Alcohol and Beverages Division when, um, each entity that is requesting it um, files and pays and has their gram shop and everything in order. So from an administrative standpoint through our office, everything is in order. Um, New Star has been there for a long time. Uh, sent this out to, um, all departments, I don't believe we've heard any, um, anything against. There is also the opportunity, um, each time for, uh, new under state of Iowa, relatively new in the last year. I believe this is good Class, um, E retail. Um, so, um, it does have the ability to have an automatic electronic, um, renewal if you guys would want to. Uh, that does not take away your opportunity to, uh, remove the license at any point. Uh, but it's a, allows for an automatic, uh, renewal if you so choose.
Sheriff, do you have any comments in regarding, uh, the application for alcohol license renewal for New Star Pella? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal application.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Onto item number seven. This is the approval site plan for the Marion County Road Department Junction ninety-two. Missy.
So this is a process that's required, um, for anything other than residential agricultural uses for the zoning code adopted by the board supervisors. Um, any kind of county use is allowed in agricultural zoning district with a special use permit. That special use permit was put in place in February of twenty twenty. So the last piece of the puzzle was to, as you guys move forward on the Junction ninety-two shop is for the zoning commission to give a recommendation to you as a board of supervisors. Um, that recommendation or that review was done last Tuesday on the twenty-first, including, um, so I provided you with all the same documents that the zoning commission reviewed, which includes the, um, the site plan as a whole and the, um, detention requirements that are set forth by the zoning code. And all that was approved, uh, act during a public hearing. So, and I said I would defer to Tyler for further discussion since this is his project and he describes it way better than I did.
Thank you, Missy. Tyler.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any questions, um, kind of the overview, I guess, is the, the main shop is thirty, roughly thirty-two thousand square feet. There's an addition of two salt sheds and a cold storage building as well as the fuel island. Um, detention has been redesigned based on the final site plan, uh, by Garden and Associates, uh, because Missy and I were the drafters of the ordinance. I went to outside consultants for the design of the detention, uh, basins and stormwater runoff. Uh, so, uh, the detention basins have been modified per their new revised design with this final site plan and the impervious area and whatnot. Uh, we will be relocating, uh, some storm shelters that we currently have at our facility, other facilities. And we'll have more than enough capacity for the staff that will be on site daily, plus, uh, the capacity if our meeting room is full and for a training or, or whatnot, so. Um, there is an oil water separator, that was one of the questions that came up during the, the meeting. Uh, there is an oil water separator for our floor drains and our wash bay, that is a DNR requirement. Um, that, and then that is separate from the septic that was, uh, designed by an outside consultant as well, based on the size of the structure and facility here, so. Um, other than that, I guess, I guess, I'll take any individual, any questions about the site plan. Um, you've seen variations of this along the way, this is just the final version that was included in the, uh, packet to the zoning commission.
I have no further questions.
No, nor do I.
All right.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Second. John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Item number, uh, eight is resolution twenty twenty-three ninety-three, Marion County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Jeff.
Morning. I'd like to start with, uh, thanking, thanking my assistant Emily for spearheading this project and getting it to completion stages. Also like to thank all of the county departments that contributed information and made the planning process go as well as it did. Um, I think you're pretty well familiar with what hazard mitigation is and why we have the plan. Under our previous plan, we completed our first hazard mitigation project, which was the Storm Siren and Tracy. So looking forward to, uh, an additional bigger, much bigger project once, um, we've adopted this plan. I'll yield to any questions that you may have.
Things annoying.
I'm sure it is.
Did you not have one before?
It goes off every Wednesday or something like that, I'm, I'm setting out there and going, oh, yeah.
First Wednesday of the month, ten AM. No, I don't have any questions.
But, but it's helpful.
Yeah, good, good work, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Emily, yep, appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ninety-three.
Second. McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Item number nine, resolution twenty twenty-three ninety, Marion County Official Twenty Twenty Four Employee Holiday Resolution. Okay, Lisa?
Oh, her voice doesn't work.
It doesn't work, okay.
So the point
Can you hear me?
Oh, Lisa?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This, this resolution just keeps the holidays that you have approved in the past, nothing has changed. Um, just a commemorative that you need to do.
All right.
All right. Thank you. No further questions, entertain a motion.
I'm moving approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash ninety.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Onto item number ten, Marion County FY twenty-five budget.
All right. Lindsay, I'll let you pull that up. All right. So, what's that? I'll, 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 I'll start and then I'm going to turn it over to you. So what we've been, uh, working on really almost a year now, uh, is, uh, I hesitate to call it an automated way to do our budget, but it's as close as we can get right now to an automated way to do our budget. So in working with Lindsay, we put together, um, some spreadsheets that have input, uh, uh, parameters for each of the department heads to, uh, review increases, review what we've done, what they've done in the past in terms of specific line items, pick some percentages that they might want to increase those line items or increase it across the board on a, on a level percentage. And then they can see kind of in real time, uh, what that means from a budgetary perspective. But before, we've always operated off these paper, uh, books uh, that are not very real time for, especially the board of supervisors to review changes that we might want to make or for the department head to see where they might want to go in particular items, whether it's salaries, whether it's maybe a different operating expense categories that they might want to change. So the goal of this is to make that, uh, A, a more transparent process, uh, and B, provide the department head greater flexibility to manage their operating expenses. Usually salaries and benefits are pretty well established because that's a discussion between the board and the, uh, operating entities. But when you look at everything else, uh, there's probably room to maneuver, especially when we're thinking about cost savings. So hopefully what this will do as we work through it will provide a more interactive process for the board and for the department heads to be able to develop their budgets as we move into this next year. So there's my intro, Lindsay, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
All right. I'm going to turn it over to you, explain what we've got here.
So this is a continuation of what we started, excuse me, last budget season. So we started out with a spreadsheet where each department had an expense tab and a revenue tab going back to fiscal year two thousand eighteen. So this has been updated through the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three and then also with twenty twenty-four budgets and appropriations. And then thi- this is public health tab, just for an example, but so each department then has.
So yeah, me, my, I wanted to embed it there.
Um, each department now will have this column where they can enter an increase or a decrease for the expenses to budget for the next fiscal year. So for example, if a salary increase was going to be five percent, that could be entered here and it populates in the budget twenty twenty-five column. It also populates down here at the bottom and calculates the FICA and the IFRS. So hopefully, like Mark said, it will be a simple automated process where you can go through, put in increase or decrease. You can also override in the budget twenty twenty-five column. If you don't want to put a percentage and you just know it's going to be a flat amount, you can just type that in. It does total by fund and then by department here at the bottom. So each count, or each department also has a summary tab um, that looks like this. And so this details salaries, benefits and operating expenses from fiscal year two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-three and then also with the budget and the appropriations for twenty twenty-four. There's also a chart on the right-hand side and the colors differ between departments, but so you can see the increase or decrease in salaries, in benefits and in operating expenses from year to year. Down below, there is a list of operating expenses by line item. So you can see the increase or decrease from year to year there as well. And if the department has revenue, that is listed here at the bottom of the spreadsheet, a total for each year. I don't know if there's any questions. Okay, so then countywide, we have the same thing. So here is a countywide summary. Now, there's a lot of information, so it's hard to see. Same thing, so salaries and operating expenses and then benefits by fund by year. And then the chart over here shows that as well. So where we've been, actual expenses through twenty twenty-three and then twenty twenty-four, and this is just the budget, not the appropriation in the chart. So all of the individual tabs flow through into this page, which is a fund balance page. So this will, when you update the budgets, like for example with twenty twenty-five, if you update the public health budget for salaries or for operating expenses, it's going to change this expense number here. The same with revenue, which will go right above it. And then those change the ending fund balance number, which is here. We've also got a property tax chart, also going back to two thousand eighteen by fund. So it lists the amount, the current net property taxes received by fund are listed here. And then below is the levy of that year. So for the general fund, it has not changed, it was just in that, in that one spot. And then the chart for that as well going up. So that's what we've got so far, um, it's a work in progress. Um, we're open, I think, to suggestions, if there's something that would be helpful or something that's not helpful, uh, we can make adjustments as we go.
Yeah, Lindsay, great, and first of all, my compliments to Lindsay and the work that she did putting this together. Uh, this was no small task.
Well, I had a lot of help, though.
And yes, and to all the department heads and Jake, uh, working with her on this. But the goal is to, in, in, to try to get in one place everything that we do when we talk, uh, budget, when we talk managing expense, uh, when we talk about fund balances, levy rates, uh, and try to get that into a place that we both as a board, as department heads and equally as important to public, so they can see these numbers in real time as we work through them and think about what those tax levies are going to. Uh, and I think that's very, very, that, to me, that's one of the most important aspects of this is the transparency uh, that this offers, uh, that, that, uh, uh, especially when you think about charts and we can expand the charts over time to be more of a dashboard of different departments, different funds, different expenses, Lindsay and I have talked about that, we're not there yet because really we're to the point now of testing this out with one or more departments as we get to the budget process, uh, to see how it'll work. Um, and that is coming up. Uh, the one thing this does not do, I want to put this little asterisk here, Lindsay, before you say it. The process of transferring the data from this to Jake and what we do in the AS four hundred, I believe that's the term there.
Yep.
Jake, right now, you correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you, you manually enter all that data presently. This process, unless there's a way to import, export that data into what Jake does, that's still there. So it's not intended to fix every issue right now, right now, we focused on department heads establishing the budget and the board of supervisors and what we do, uh, when we assess expenses uh, and establish parameters around those different expense loads. The next step in this process, if everybody likes it and it passes some of those tests, will be how do we then transfer that data and make those macros work, uh, between those two systems? Okay?
And I think the other thing that we'll add, and I haven't quite done, finished that yet, is um, of some sort of, of box or calculation so that once the budgets have been approved, you can, um, potentially change the levy amounts if you want to do that. So if you were to decrease the levy, you know, five cents, what does that look like for revenues? And so that's not in here yet, but it will be by January.
Yeah, so Lindsay and I have talked about that relative to how we have reduced levies, uh, especially over the last several years in Fund Two. So rather than looking at gross dollar amounts, just say, look, if we took ten cents off the levy, Jake has always had that nice little chart that show what the dollar figures are, well, if we can just say, let's take ten cents off the levy and let it flow through, we'll see what those impacts are, uh, particularly the Fund Two, which still has some room to reduce uh, and still hold enough dollars for those FICA, IFRS and healthcare expenses. So we'll work on that piece and have that ready to go.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
Do you?
Tyler.
You go ahead.
I, just clarifying that you, you mentioned testing, are, are, is it going to be tested ahead of this budget session? For this budget session to, for all department heads to?
Really depends on what the board, it depends on what the board wants to do, Tyler, we've got the templates. I, I think we could use it right now if we wanted to for our major departments. Well, we could do it for the individual departments, any department, working with Lindsay, uh, to put that out there. So it really is, that's why we're presenting this today.
So is it a, it'll be just a shared file somewhere that everyone can access? Right. So just be on the?
Because I'm assuming you're going to, each department's going to want Because I'm assuming you're gonna, each department's gonna want, um, to be able to only do their own and not, you can view, but not edit somebody else's.
Maybe IT, you know, if there's restrictions on what tabs you could edit, but I do think it would be nice that we, like the property tax, I'm not, is that just revenue or does it showing real-time expenses as departments start putting their expense line in, the impact to the specific fund? To the fund balance. Okay, so, so I think it would be nice if the file as a whole was shareable and viewable and editable, you know, maybe for your own tabs, but, so we could all see it. And then, and then I have a question, you know, with, with Jake, we make specific notations for adding or removing specific-
That was gonna be one of my questions, too.
What's the, what would be the process for that? Are we allowed to do that? Do we have to go through, Lindsay? So just, just-
That's a great question. Those are great questions. Jake, how, from an audit, from an auditor standpoint, we would have to make notations-
Yeah, I think-
-to do that. So how would we do that?
Well, I, I think that, um, we'll have to just, that will just have to be, however these are submitted, will just need to be submitted to, um, both Lindsay and I, because we will have to build a new number into the four hundred as well. So can you go to like one of the department sheet, just like the regular, you can-
Like the expense sheet?
Yeah. So is there a chart of account numbers? I was just, okay, good. So there are chart of account numbers. So that's our tie to our budget software, is those chart of account numbers. So I'm assuming, I wanna speak, so for this worksheet, if somebody wants to add a new line, let's say for a specific project, it would generally just tell me that on the bottom or whatever. We would communicate back and forth and, and I need, we need to find the correct chart of account numbers to build that in, uh, to the four hundred, uh, which, so I'm assuming we would do that here, too, right?
Yeah, we give it back, we get added, yep.
So when, um, when these go out or people start submitting, we're just gonna need, be submitting to, to both of us. And then we'll just make sure we communicate, um, that, um, for, for our standpoint to, it looks like the assumption for the twenty-twenty-four was basically this year's budget, right?
Yep.
Which is how I, we, how we always generate, um, so. This is the other, what was the other?
So do you want that in?
Oh, yeah, sorry, too many. It's a lot of columns.
It's okay.
Yeah, so twenty-four, um, it looks like twenty-four is assuming this year's budget, which is fine. Um, I was wondering, like, the percentage decrease, if you didn't wanna change something, because there are a lot of the miscellaneous department ones that the board oversees, like, just doesn't change. Can you put a zero? So, okay. Then you wouldn't have to override, then you wouldn't have to override.
No, you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, so ultimately for like our entry, um, there is, um, there is something that, it's not terrible to hand enter those. That's, it's not that many. Um, but it's also nice to do it automatically, and there may be a way that we can line up columns from the spreadsheet to import into our software. So that's just another, another thing for another day. Maybe this year, maybe next.
Okay.
But we ultimately need that chart of account number and that line, um, CI. That's what I need. That's what we need to enter. So if this goes out to departments and they start messing around with it, that's fine. I, I mean, we can definitely communicate that together. We'll have to have a drop dead date of when they have to be submitted. Um, we'll summarize, I mean, maybe you guys can look at it closer than when I give you the fund worksheets and stuff, like the fund balances and all those things. A lot of that'll be the same, but, um, I don't have any issue with this going out and people playing with it. Our, our process is generally to get taxable evaluations, which is my next, it's my ni- it's my next big task. State has issued the rollbacks. Residential's down eight percent. Uh, Ag's down twenty. Um, and so we have some very, we, we at least know that. That's my next big project to do to the state by December thirty-one. Obviously, we wanna try and get that done as fast as we can, but, um, that's what everybody's waiting on, is our evaluations. Um, the second piece of the unknown is the new, um, House File seven-eighteen, which caps, uh, which means you cannot raise your main levies, like more than three fifty anymore, which Marion County hasn't, but, um, it also puts a cap growth on it. So if we have more than three percent taxable valuation growth, which we don't know yet, especially with these re- these rollbacks, um, coming in considerably lower than last year, we may not be affected by the three percent. So it'll just be whatever, the, the cap.
Right, right.
Uh, the cap then on the taxable valuation will tell you if you have to, if you can leave your levy at three fifty or you're gonna have to reduce it.
Have to bring it down.
But it won't make the general fund, as long as valuation isn't less than last year. The general fund, uh, from the taxing side, not all the miscellaneous receipts and revenues, like, you know.
It's intended for revenue neutrality.
It's, yes, exactly. Um, you know, should not go backwards.
Right.
There just may not be much of an increase.
Right.
I mean, I don't, um, I think we use the word blessed every year, but, uh, these rollbacks are, um, pretty, pretty big drop from this year. So we'll see what, how much growth there is. And then the other factor that we don't know yet is cities, municipalities, Paul and Knoxville, Pleasantville have to certify their tip debts yet, so if there's new tips or things, so that affects the taxable valuation at the end of the year as well. So, and that's a December one deadline.
Right, so Jake, from, from just a timeline standpoint on how we establish the budget, would there be anything wrong with Lindsay sending these out to department heads to at least work on their pieces of it? Uh, now?
Yeah, I don't think so, um, because we're gonna generate, um, I still will go through the same three-step process that we do to flip the year. Um, what, you know, I have to build in, once taxable evaluations are done, we build in taxable values and then the projected levies. I always start with last year's levies, which I believe is what Lindsay has done as well, started with last year's levies. We, we've talked quite a bit over time just on, on how to show property tax, because there's what you, each jurisdiction asks for, and then there's all the credits and exemptions and all those things with coming back. So, um, I think she did a pretty clean approach on that. It was good. Um, you know, all this live, the live data and the showing what it does to the balances. Um, you know, once we know that, it could affect that final summary page where it's the fund balances. I mean, right now, we're assuming static stuff, so it will, it will be an ebb and, it will be a continual change for a while as we go through this. But people just, everybody needs to understand that as each step takes place, that taxable evaluations get done, then you can project out what the actual tax collections could be if you guys left it at that value. So then that would be a big change. Departments won't see that. They can be looking, I mean, I don't know if you, so it kinda goes back to that. So I don't have any issue. It's, it's got good history on it and all those things. A lot of that data came from those, the, those budget worksheets. But the additions or subtractions of lines, um, would be, needed to be communicated to both. So I, I don't have any, I don't see any heartburn. It's just gonna be a little bit different.
Yep.
And the only other thing that I wanted to add quick is the percentage increase or decrease column will change your actual budget twenty-twenty-four, not the appropriated amount. So.
But we could make appropriated just be a hundred percent.
Well, we could, we could, Jake, but I don't like that. So, um, so I left, so we left that alone because that's what we established as our appropriated amounts.
Yeah.
So it changes your actual budget column, but it won't change the appropriation. That way, from a board standpoint, when we're looking back at what we did, if we want to change that number, we can. And it will, so you see that ninety up there? If we take that down to eighty-five, it'll show us whatever that new number is.
Right.
If we wanna tighten down further.
I, I missed the beginning. What did you say, state changes? What, what on twenty-four changes?
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just saying that when you change this percentage here, it's a percentage increase or decrease of the budgeted number.
Oh, yeah.
Not the appropriated budget.
Yeah, no, yes.
You have to change that, that ninety, Jake.
Yes.
To change that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, we haven't had any budget amendments yet, um, but we have some proposed, some possible proposed budget amendments that we may have to.
Yeah.
If that changes on twenty-four, then we have to blow that through, too. Those are all just, those are logistics.
Good. Good. Board, any, anything, anything else?
Um, my just thoughts were, if, if we do, uh, push this out, then I do think that it's important that department heads electeds work on it and then possibly come back, um, for the December fourteenth, if they have questions, or we can maybe discuss some more. But then maybe will we know any numbers, Jake, so that we can, you won't know it till the end of the thirtieth or whatever, so projections? Because I kinda like what we did last time, last year, and did for salaries, and I think that helps everyone, um.
I think one of the things we need to see, and hopefully this'll do this before the end of the year, because it sounds like you're on an, almost an end of the year timeframe.
I have a, I have a goal to try, but I mean, like, TIF debt isn't due till December one.
Right.
Um, there's quite a process working through all, all those revitalization projects and then to applying all these rollbacks. So, I mean, I, I have a goal to push as hard as I can. I'm losing some tax support as well. But, I mean, the deadline, don't have to have it submitted until the thirty-first. That's when it's due to the state.
So, so I would say about three things. Knowing where the departments are in the process will be very beneficial for us. Where are our operating expenses going? Do you have any questions on how this works? Anything, any bugs we need to iron out? Second thing is, when we look at those operating expenses relative to where we want salaries to go. So we see where salaries are and where do we want them to go and start to have those discussions, Keisha. I think, I think that's an important thing. I have not received a bulletin on compensation committee or anything, so I don't know where that's at.
The board is in quite a transition, um, and has several, some new people, so there has not been a meeting established yet at this point.
But it doesn't preclude us, Jake, from looking at numbers and start to have those discussions, at least at a preliminary basis from a board standpoint.
Yeah, the, there, the X factors that we don't know yet are the ultimate, you know, property tax collection.
We will have-
But somebody has, projects fees and things like that, they sure can.
But by mid-month, Lisa, I hope you can talk, by mid-month, we should have an idea on health insurance, at least a range of where health insurance is going? Is that correct? Yeah, I don't think she's on, but we talked about this before I left, and I think it's, at least by mid-month, maybe even by next week, we'll get an idea on health insurance. So some of your big numbers that go into your budget, we'll be able to give you some, and have some discussion as a board around those issues.
Does the-
So I think that'd be very good, Keisha, to have that on the agenda next time.
The IFRS, are they different for the law enforcement? Very good.
So-
Mark, it's Lisa.
You have, yeah. Lisa, he was just referring about the health insurance.
Yep, I was trying to unmute myself. I apologize. Um, we do, um, we typically don't know, we'll know some direction by December, but solid number, we won't know till the first of January.
Yeah. Same as always.
Yep.
All right.
I, I do think, um, streamlining this purpose, this budget process is very vital. Um, making this so that it's, we're working on it, but working on it together. Um, I don't want it to be so everybody is anxious, um, and, uh, since if we're all seeing somewhat the numbers and we're working on it together, um, for the greater good, I think that's important. I do have a question, though, just in general, and this is department heads, um, electeds. Priority for the board, it, do you think it would be important for like a Survey Monkey or a survey of some sort, be anonymous, to know how we rate, like, whether insurance is important or salary is important, or, um, I, I mean, I'm just throwing those out. Does anybody have any concern or think that that would be beneficial? No? No, no comments? Okay. I just wanna put that out there because if we're missing the boat and we're missing something that you're hearing your employees say that they want to be prioritized, they're like, time off, that would, could be another one, you know? Would that, would that help at all? Yes, okay, all right. Very simple. I mean, I'm not looking at making this very difficult, just something that we could look at. I mean, and, and so, um, and I don't know if Survey Monkey is the word, but I just know people use that, so. Um, and if the board is okay with that, maybe that's something we look at and we can talk about next meeting. Yeah, so.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, and you guys can think about it. Let's, we'll just put on the discussion on December, uh, fourteenth, another budget discussion, and if we can get this out, then mess around with it and have questions, you know, see what.
So am I, just so we're clear, and Steve, I don't know if you have any questions on this as well, but are you okay with Lindsay starting to push the individual sheets out?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
To that, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I was just gonna say, I'd volunteer to be a test dummy. I mean, I already use a spreadsheet. It's just gonna be a matter of copying and pasting.
Yep.
I think it'd be good to get them out, get a feel for them.
I can easily do this, so I, I will volunteer.
Okay. Very good. Well, Lindsay, let's do that. Very good, and thank you again.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Department heads, thank you. Jake?
Yeah, there are multiple-
Thank you.
Multiple departments.
Lots of people contributed, so, very good.
Entertained a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Item number eleven, Board of Supervisor Updates. Mr. McCombs?
I, I have an upcoming HERDA meeting this week.
Mr. Raimi?
I have mental health and Board of Health, both today.
I don't have anything at this point, so appreciate that.
Wait a minute.
So do you wanna give an update on the action on SERPTA last week?
No, go ahead.
The, the SERPTA, so the SERPTA Board, the, the Policy and Technical Committee Boards both voted to move SERPTA out from under the umbrella of the Des Moines MPO and join forces with, uh, MIPA, which we are a member of both MIPA and SERPTA, and the staff will be combined. They will be looking for new offices. So, yeah, that's the update.
Okay.
We'll see how that goes.
All right.
MIPA reviewed and approved, or?
All right. At this point, we are, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. This will be the end of our open session.
Move to, uh, adjourn from open and move into close.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hi.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Action is, uh, necessary from the closed session. We authorize the county engineer, um, to explore the third party for the situation during, which we discussed, um, in closed session. Right? Entertained a motion to, or do we need approval of that?
Um, you reconvened, and that was your action, so generally you would, um-
Mr. Jern?
You're not taking an action, so, um, yes, I would take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.